Good morning. I opened the New Kent County Board of Supervisors April 28, 2025 meeting. Ms. Stanger, we poll the members, call the roll.
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Welcome. Ms. Steers, you have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move to go into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A dot one of the Code of Virginia for discussion of performance of a board-appointed employee involving a personnel contract.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Ms. Stanger, poll the members, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. We go into closed session, be out in a few minutes.
Good morning. Did I get this properly? All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman and Board members. Before you is the proposal from our On Call Services contract to study our existing sites in the county and identify potential locations where data center development would serve a highest and best use. New Kent currently has over 10 sites in the market that are privately owned. If the county wants to support data center growth, we recommend targeting specific sites to create a technology zone overlay district. Communities throughout the country have successfully approved and promoted technology zone overlays to control data center growth development. This study will help the county understand existing utility infrastructure and strategically position us to encourage development in areas that make the most sense for the community. The proposed consultant from our On Call Services contract is also assisting the county with water modeling around our industrial sites. We believe it makes the most sense to retain them based on their expertise and historical knowledge of sites around the county. I'm available to answer any questions you have about the request.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Pearson?
Mr. Chair. Ms. Hur, well, this, this is just of our existing sites. They're not identifying other sites in the county. Is that correct?
They will identify sites that are around the county with the utility infrastructure, but we have the right to say, no, that's not a good fit. It would follow along, anything along our comprehensive plan that's already been approved, that already has something that's industrial or economic opportunity.
Okay. And have they done this for other localities?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know we had a joint meeting with the EDA and the Board of Supervisors pertaining to the data centers, but before I would ever support that, there's a lot more information I think we need before we, you know, definitely decide to go that route.
Yes, sir. So this is really an initial study to identify.
Right.
It is not recommending the overlay district. It is not giving approval or allowing zoning approval at this time. It's only to study what exists, and it's not saying that the board is currently in support of full data center zoning approvals.
Exactly. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moyer? If I'm correct, this is where a lot of jurisdictions in the past have made mistakes that they did not look at this and make these kind of decisions because of a study. They just were by righted, and that could cause more of a problem.
Yes, there are, there are communities around Virginia that, for example, Louisa County has done this recently and had some success because they're also a rural county, and they've used this overlay as an opportunity to say, we know we don't want development in these areas, and so we're only strategically placing development approvals in certain areas where it makes sense. Yep.
Thank you. I know that the data center market was up in northern Virginia has been going wild, and then obviously with the electricity needs with Dominion, with the power of support here in the middle part of state is becoming a hot, hot topic for data centers, so I think it's good to get on top of it, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we do know that a lot of the data center development will go to areas where they already know the zoning's in place, and we currently don't have that back when we did our zoning ordinances. That was not even a potential topic. So, so I think this will give us an opportunity to, to drive where we want that development.
Mr. Chair. Oh, yeah. Ms. Pearson? This is for Mr. Hathaway. What is the balance in the contingency if we afford this? Do you know approximately? It doesn't have to be exact.
We are over, should be over 200,000 in our balance or right around. 150, around that mark.
All right. With that said.
Ms. Moyer?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I authorize the, I moves authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed contract with Duberry Engineers for a GIS-based analysis of county sites to identify potential data center locations. I further move to appropriate $16,000 from the reserves from the contingency budget line item to fund this request.
Thank you, Ms. Moyer. Is there any other discussion? If not, Ms. Stanger, poll the members, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you. Next, Resolution R-16-25 supporting HRPDC's application for grant funding for the regional water supply plan. Mr. Lang?
Good morning, everyone. We have been invited and accepted the invitation to join HRPDC's regional water planning effort. The water supply plan is required by DEQ every five years, so this is a revision of our existing plan. The resolution request specifically is to authorize HRPDC to act on our behalf for grant funding from DEQ. The water supply plan comes at no cost to the county, so this was a good, a good investment of time for us.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution R-16-25 to participate with all local governments and water authorities within the Hampton Roads, York, and James River two planning area, regional planning unit, in the development of a regional water supply plan that will comply with mandated regulations, and authorize the lead agent to develop an application for water supply planning grant funds to offset, to the extent feasible, the cost of developing said regional water supply plan, and manage all grant funds received and allocate these shared funds toward the tasks and deliverables proposed in the grant application for the benefit of the entire regional planning unit, and authorizing Robert A. Crum Jr., Executive Director, HRPDC, to sign the DEQ contract and other appropriate documents related to the water supply planning grant and the regional water supply plan. Shoot.
Yeah. Any discussion? Ms. Stanger, poll the members, please.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Lang. Next, we're continuing FY26 budget updates and discussion. Mr. Lawrence?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Like at our last couple meetings, I have a few minor updates, technical updates to the recommended budget as it was presented. You'll see them in this memo. We have final numbers from the comp board, so we just trued those figures up that ends up being a net increase of just over $25,000 to revenues in the general fund. Our original estimates were based on what we assumed the comp board would do for funding with the 3% increase and the 1.5% bonus based on last year's budgeted figure. So we were fairly close, but it's always good to see that move in the positive direction. Next up is a Parks and Rec adjustment, and on the initial memo that you all got, it's at $7,500. I gave Ms. Stanger a adjusted memo this morning to say $2,500, and this is just to account for the lease rental of equipment for Parks and Rec. Our Parks and Rec staff reviewed their recommended budget and let me know that we missed something on our end, and I always appreciate that, so we were able to adjust that. Obviously, it doesn't really impact anything on the budget side, given the increase on the comp board side. And then the, the big item in here is related to EDA CIP items. In our recent 2026 budget discussion with the EDA for their operating budget, they noted that the Buc-E's incentive for water sewer tap fees, similar to what we did with the AutoZone incentive, probably wouldn't be met in FY26, and it'd be wise to move that to FY27 just to kind of give a more realistic timeline for when that project would get going. So we So, we requested we remove that item from next year's funding into FY '27 funding. In that same conversation, they did request that we fund at least one sponsorship for next fiscal year's race schedule. We originally left these sponsorships out of our initial CIP, given the kind of unknown of where the Colonial Downs funding was going to land this year. Now that we feel a little bit more confident about it, we would like to move that back into FY '26. So, with the removal of the Buc-E's incentive, or the moving out of the Buc-E's incentive to FY '27, and the increase of the sponsorship, we see a net change of $92,500 to CIP in a decrease. If that's all right with the board, we will go forward and make that adjustment. And then, last but not least, budget advertisement is out there. That is at the three cent increase, which is what we advertise for tax rates as well, as you all know, but maybe some folks that don't always tune in may not know. We can always budget to the max. We can't go higher. We can always decrease. So, it is budgeted at that tax increase to give you all the option to move up there should you want to. We can always come down, can't go up. So, we are excited for this process. You know, it's been a long one. We definitely appreciate all of y'all's help, and, you know, all your requests for information are always appreciated because it lets me get a better idea of how we want to move along. So, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions about this in particular, but do we have the final real estate numbers yet?
Yes. So, the number we have now is fairly accurate. Any adjustment that would come would be in the form of supplements, and it wouldn't be a material change to the final revenue figures. So, where we stand currently is pretty accurate. It's not a reassessment year, so it's really just based on what we pick up throughout the year, and that's, I think, at 4.8% growth is what was originally quoted, so when speaking to the commissioner, we felt that was a fairly accurate number.
Anybody else? Ms. Steers?
4.8%. What's the number?
So, the actual number I do not have in front of me. The, I can get you that.
Okay.
As soon as we get out of the meeting. I wouldn't want to quote an incorrect number here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, do you have information on the business taxes? Any estimate on those?
Yes. So, those are still fairly, you know, accurate.
Okay.
They're still set at the same level they were before. We have a decent, you know, idea, but obviously, we quote those out over a year in advance, so there's some room for change.
Okay.
On that as well. Less stable or less fixed than your real estate figures.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you and your team and staff for all the work you've done as well.
Thank you.
Preparing this budget. Thank you. Next, governmental scenarios discussion with Davenport. Ted?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First is the general fund, I think. Is that where you all want to start? Okay. And this is a continuation of what we presented at the retreat. And if you go to page three, just a quick overview with what we're working with on the general fund, we're talking about a potential for two projects that would sum up to about 130 million, an elementary school at 65 million, and a courthouse project at 65. Those are same assumptions we used when we last met, and we've run three different scenarios there. Scenario one is one, we do one of those projects, either one, they're the same cost, through one borrowing in the fall of '26, which would be FY '27. The second scenario, we do both of those projects, and we fund them both at the same time in the fall of '26. And then, lastly, or thirdly, both projects, but we stagger them. We do one of them with a borrowing in the fall of '26 and one in the fall of '27. So, that's kind of the universe of the amounts and the timing. And then, that third bullet from the bottom starts with additionally. You might remember when we were at the retreat, there was a discussion about cash that you all have accumulated over time. Can we contribute that? How does that impact the affordability of all of this? So, we've run five cases for each of those scenarios, and we've got a nice summary table, so this will be all manageable. And those five cases for each scenario is we contribute $0 from that reserve, 2.5 million, 5 million, 7.5, up to 10 million. So, we're going to measure what each of these scenarios looks like with those various cash contributions. And then, the last scenario we did run, because there was a decent amount of conversation at the retreat about policies, is can we do these? You might recall with the scenarios we ran, we had some policy issues, right? We were out of compliance for some number of years for a few different policies. And so, we've run a scenario that tries to show what this would look like if you wanted to fund these projects and be in compliance with all of those policies every single year, and we're going to address that. So, remember on page four, if you go to page four, this is your existing tax-supported debt profile, right? So, you're at about 8.5 million dollars a year for all of the tax-supported debt that's been issued over time. Remember, no utilities is in here, and the big drop in your debt occurs in fiscal year '30, where you've got a big drop, and I think that's basically driven by the high school debt rolling off, which at the time was around a 25-year financing that we did at that time for the high school. Okay? So, that's where we're starting from. All right. So, page five, across the top, is showing you that this is, page five and six work, will work in tandem. But scenario one is, remember, the top third of this page is what are we borrowing for in the fall of '26? And if you look at line nine, scenario one, we're just borrowing 65 million, one project or the other. You go across to scenario two, we're borrowing for both projects. And you go to scenario three, we're borrowing for one of them. Then you go to the middle section, what's going on in the '27 borrowing? Well, there's nothing going on in scenario one or two, because we're not doing any borrowings there in '27. But scenario three, which is the staggered approach, one project in '26, one in '27, right? So, that kind of orients you to what we're funding here across these three scenarios. Total amount funded in projects is on line 23, 65 million, and then two different ways to get to the 130 million. We highlighted in red some of the debt policies where we're going to run into a compliance issue, right? And the one that's out there for the longest is that 10-year payout ratio, and that is a measurement of how quickly you're amortizing your debt. And by going, would we land here on this debt? 30 years. We assume this new debt would be a 30-year debt. That's about as long as most local governments would go for a bricks-and-mortar project. And like, if you used a state program for funding, that's as long as they're authorized to go. So, 30 years is longer, but it brings down your annual payment, which helps on the affordability. But it also means that the debt principal is paying back more slowly. It's like a mortgage, right? Your early years is heavy interest and very little principal, and that works in the same fashion. So, all three of these scenarios do create a policy issue. So, let's go to page six. This is one project, 65 million, borrowed in 2026, and we have solved for how to make this work, if you will, affordability-wise, a few different ways. So, just, let's go down the column. Line four is you could make it work with the way you budget for debt now, if on top of borrowing for the project, you contributed 2.3 million of your reserves. That would make this work without any tax impact or any other revenue, right? So, 2.3 million of that capital reserve that you've accumulated. That would be one way to make it work from a cash flow perspective. Go down to line 12. Another way to do it is don't contribute the cash, but raise the tax revenue when needed, and it'd be a little over two pennies in 2028, right? So, it wouldn't be for a couple more budgets, but that would be another way to solve this case, is rather than contributing cash, two pennies in '28. Go down to lines 14 through 19. If you wanted to split it up between two budget years, '26 and '27, you'd need about .6 pennies each year for a total of 1.2. And then, at the very bottom, you do it all at once, whether it's in '26 or '27. So, it's, this is, two, three, four or five ways to fund this scenario, right? You got to do something, because the revenue you're bringing into your debt right now is not enough to cover the full 65, but we're somewhere between a $2.3 million cash contribution or one to two pennies worth of new revenue. Okay?
And this is for one project?
One project, either one. That's not what we're modeling, or we're, 65 million. So, it's one or the other. Okay?
One-time contribution.
One-time contribution. Because you, you know, you're contributing money every year, right? Because you got debt, and it's starting to fall off, and the one-time upfront of 2.3 million would make this all work in your budget without additional resources needed. For the debt, right? Now, this is, I guess, a net new school to the county system, if it's a school, so there would be some operating impact, maybe for the courthouse, I don't know. So, just for the debt, one-time cash contribution of 2.3 million, or somewhere between one and two pennies worth of new revenue, depending on what year you would start that.
Ms. Pearson?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So, you're saying that if we contribute 2.4 million, you said or do this, so we wouldn't have to do a tax rate at all if?
That's right.
If we did the 2.4 million?
It's correct. You are right.
And is there any growth factored into this whole presentation?
I don't believe there is. We didn't grow the value of a penny, did we? We went?
We grew it by 1%.
1% growth in the revenue that one penny generates.
Is that realistic?
We're trending much.
I know. I think you're, that's being very conservative, but I just would like, I wanted to know what the answer to that was. So, we could, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, this is kind of an à la carte menu, if you will. These are all independent of each other when you're looking at these options, right? 2.3 million contribution versus different ways and timing, or I should say, different timing for tax rate revenues to start independent of, you know, separate and apart from any cash that you might contribute. You have choices.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question? I apologize. I know you probably want to wait until we get finished with all of it, but now I've lost my train of thought. Oh, if we did this, where are we out of compliance still? And if we didn't do this, we'd still be out of compliance, correct?
If you did this, yes, you go back to page five under scenario one. That 10-year payout ratio, which is the percentage higher is better, is out of compliance for around 13 years. The minimum policy says 50%. You drop to as low as 37%. And the only way to fix that is to shorten this new debt from 30 years to something shorter, which means the payment's going to go higher, which means you need more cash or more tax revenue to pay for it. So, sort of squeezing it this way, the payment goes up.
I think that's all for now.
Okay. All right. So, go to page seven. Now, we go to scenario two, where we're funding both projects, and we're doing them both at the same time in the fall of '26. And you go across the top, you'll see in the very dark green header, how much cash are we contributing? Zero all the way to 10. And you're going to see that the scenario 2A, the cash needed would be something like $46 billion, right? It's just an amount of money you don't have to contribute. So, you got to go down and say, okay, we don't have that kind of cash, so what is the impact on the tax rate? Well, if you just did it when you needed to do it, be 1.7 pennies in '27, the equivalent of 7.5 pennies in '28, the total would be about nine pennies to do both projects at one time. Alternatively, if you spread out the impact and tried to take a piece of it in '26 and do another piece of it in '27 to raise that revenue, you could get by with about 5.3 pennies. So, it's happening a little sooner, right? Because in the first scenario, or excuse me, up top, you don't need anything till '27, and the big bulk of it is in '28. Well, we're talking about this scenario potentially going on line 17 and 18 a little earlier to put that new revenue in place, and as a result of getting it a little earlier, you don't need as many pennies over the life of the loan. So, it's 5.3 pennies. Alternatively, at the very bottom, if you said we're interested in seeing what it would take to do it once and be done with it, in '26, it would be the equivalent of about 4.8 pennies. If you weighted into '27, it'd be about six pennies. So, all of these are going to be set up the same. The first, you know, lines, line five is telling you how much cash you need to contribute to make it work. Line 14 is how many pennies you need to happen, but you only do it when the pennies are required. And then, we do a '26, '27 combo, and at the very bottom, all at once, either in '26 or '27. So, now you go across, right? And what you're going to see is the cash you're contributing on line three is getting greater, right? We're going to 2.5 million, 5, 7.5, 10. But it's not enough cash to do away with the shortfall, right? You still have 4, 36 to 40 million of other cash you need to contribute. So, it's just, you don't have enough cash to contribute to make it work financially. So, you go down, and you say, okay, if we just plan on doing this, and we're going to adjust and generate tax revenue on an as-needed basis, go along line 14, and what you'll see is it's getting smaller. The total increase is getting smaller, and it's getting pushed out in time, because that cash you're contributing buys you some time. So, the overall impact has gotten smaller as you go from left to right, and it's been pushed out in time. Go down to line 21. This is where you do half of it in '26, half of it in '27. You can see what that looks like as you go from left to right. The impacts are getting smaller because more cash is coming into the model. And then, lastly, if you did it all at once, either in '26 or in '27, you can see we go from four to five pennies down to around three and a half pennies, whether you would do that as part of the '26 budget or the '27 budget. I know that's a lot of information, but hopefully, we're sort of in a rhythm here.
So, you're basically saying that if our cent is worth 550,000, you're counting on a 1% growth of that cent as we go on?
That's right. Which is, you know, not trying to make any assumptions about what the next revow will do, right? Goes up, goes down, but just a conservative annual natural growth in the tax base.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. So, the 7.5 million, or 5 million, or 2.5, or 10 million, that would come from basically the Rosy's money. And what is the balance in that right now? Do we know? Approximate, I don't have to have exact.
So, when we did the transfer over and the reorganization, I think we were just south of 35 million. We're anticipating, like, we adjusted closer to 16 million next year. You know, with with the current earmarks, they're not official. We can always make make adjustments. I think we we have just south of 20 million.
I was gonna say, does that does that's what the Cox money taken out, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, okay. Thank you.
All right. This is page eight. You can go a little little more quickly through this because it's set up the same way. The only difference is we are still doing both projects, but we're staggering. We do one in 26 and one in 27. Same cash contributions across the the top. And and on line four, you know, again, the story is we we need we would need to contribute a lot more cash than we're contemplating to make all of the funding work. So as a result, we go down and we start looking at the number of pennies, equivalent number of pennies needed to generate new revenue to make all of this work. And we go from anywhere from about 7 and 3/4 pennies out to just under five pennies. And you'll notice the more cash we're contributing going from left to right, the pennies are getting lower and they're getting pushed out in time. Next section below, line 16 through 21, same thing. Do half in 26, half in 27. We range from 4.3 pennies down to a little over three. And at the very bottom two lines, do it all at once, either in 26 or 27. We're somewhere between four, 4 and 1/2 on the high end to three or 3 and 1/4 pennies on the low end. Questions on that?
Any questions?
Okay. All right. Last page on this is the scenario that we wanted to share that would say, you know, what do what do we what would we have to do if we wanted to fund the projects and stay in compliance with our policies, right? And and the policies have been in place for a number of years, but they are your policies and you do have the ability to make, you know, to make exceptions to them. But scenario 4A, we're funding just the one, right? 65 million dollar project. And we've got a 65 million dollar borrowing, but we've got to shorten it to 18 years. So going from 30 years to 18 years because that allows us to pay principal back more quickly, which helps that 10-year payout ratio stay in compliance. And by shorten it to 18 years, you can see you need, you know, about 3.2 million dollars of cash at the very bottom versus what had been 2.3. So it's not that different than the the first scenario that we looked at where we only did one project and we had to contribute some cash, 2.3 million, or one and 1/2 to two pennies. We're not that different here. And the but the difference would be shortening this from 30 to 18. And then you could say for that one project, we can continue to meet our policies. Because you'll notice there on line 16 through 22, we're showing you the results on your policies and there's no red there. Everything would be in compliance, tight, but in compliance. If we were to try to do that on 4B, we would only be able to borrow 74 million, right? So we've got a this is a case where we're trying to fund 130 million. We could only debt fund 74 million, which would mean you'd have to contribute 55 million of cash. And the debt we did issue would have to be 17 years. Pardon? Yeah, right. And it still has a cash contribution or a tax impact. So it is a function of just the the big one is the payout ratio, right? That's the only way to fix that is to shorten the debt from 30 years to something shorter. But then and and at the larger borrowing amounts, you do get into some issues with your debt service to expenditures. And you and that what they kind of work at cross purposes, right? When you shorten the loan, your payout's better because you're paying principal down more quickly, but your payment goes higher, which pushes your debt service to budget percentage higher. So they they at at some point work at cross purposes, which is why we're solving for you gotta you gotta contribute a pretty significant amount of cash to make both projects work within your policies. You know, we've been conservative. The scenario where you stagger these things, maybe the budget grows a little more, the tax base grows a little more. That could make these things look a little better, but I don't think it's going to eliminate the policy issue.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple more questions. So what are the repercussions of being out of our policies? Are the interest rates that we receive going to be higher?
No, I I don't think so. And I and here's why. I think if for the projects that we're talking about, which is a courthouse and a school, the likely base case borrowing scenario would be that you could go through the Virginia Resources Authority for one and the Virginia Public School Authority for the other. They both that's what they do, courthouse-type project schools. And neither of those programs are going to should. Neither of those programs should have any issue with the fact that you might be out of compliance with a policy. You you'll be aware of it, right? And if they ask you about it, you'll be able to say, yes, we're aware, not not, hey, I didn't know that. Thanks for telling it. That's what they really care about. So neither of them would should have an issue with the fact that you're out of compliance with your policy, particularly since it's been so well discussed. And when you go through those programs, everybody borrows at the same rate, whether you're AAA or non-rated. So you don't have a differential cost to participate in their programs depending on how they view your credit. Now, if we wanted to go outside of those programs and establish a bond rating and go to the bond market in the county's name, which is certainly doable, the policy discussion would be a a discussion with the rating agencies. But I don't think it would necessarily mean you're not, you know, you're not going to get a a good rating. It would be a conversation, but it would also, I think, give them a lot of comfort that there has been so much discussion surrounding it. It's still better if having a policy, being out of compliance with it and knowing that you did that is a lot better than having no policy and never having thought about it or having a policy and finding out later that you've got an issue. So it's the best of all of those scenarios is to have a policy. You didn't just adjust the policy to make it work. You you made a conscious decision to move forward with something, even though you realized it was going to create a a policy issue.
And if these were different sort of projects, that could make a difference because we can't go through that borrowing mechanism, correct?
Right, yeah. If you are going forward with something that didn't fit within those state programs, you know, we you know, we would we would have to talk through that more than likely with the rating agencies. And again, not to say that going to the ratings, rating agencies and going into the market in the county's name wouldn't be something you want to consider, but you've got two really good options that are AAA rated because they're they're creatures of the
Right.
of the state, the Commonwealth.
And Mr. Hathaway, this may be a question for you, but staggering the projects, would we have to halt planning for either of them at this juncture? Or can we move forward the same manner that we are moving forward now and just stagger it the two years? One one this year, one next year?
I believe that we could continue to move forward as as we are now because right now we're working towards a design and plan. That design will be good if we wait two or three more years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
And just so you know, both of those programs, VRA, I'll start there. They typically borrow three times a year. So summer, spring, fall. So if the courthouse were to this, y'all were to decide to move that forward with them being probably your base case option for borrowing, you got three entry points a year. With VPSA, which is all schools, they do twice a year, fall and spring. So you've got a couple of ways to manage that. And it will be important when there is a decision perhaps to move forward is to coordinate with the architects and and understand how much time they need to get to a place where the bid, the project's bid, so that you know how much money you need at the right time for when you have to submit the application to one of those programs. But that should be relatively easy to coordinate on the front end.
Thanks. All right. Next is the public utility capital funding.
All right. We'll keep going.
Yep.
Page 11. Same idea. This is a follow-up to the retreat. We have simplified things in that we have isolated in this book just the carryforwards, right? Those projects that have been approved in prior budgets, but not yet undertaken. And we've included the proposed projects for the 26 budget. That's it. We have not, for the time being today, we have not assumed any projects beyond 2026 because we wanted to isolate the borrowings that might be needed and what the impact of those would be without muddying the waters of, well, you got something in 27, 28, 29. And we've run a couple of cases. 13 million dollar borrowing is based on our analysis. And we did make a few tweaks to the model since the retreat, a little bit on operating, maybe a little bit on capital, but nothing too significant. So our our one case is we we borrow 13 million, which we and and staff, we've had at least a couple of meetings, is the minimum borrowing that we would do to to fund what we need to fund between the carryforwards and the 26 capital and just meet that 1.15 debt service coverage. Remember, you got to be able to show that every year, that you covered your debt by at least 1.15 times. And then we ran a scenario and and what happened there is our cash position falls below our policy with that 13 million dollar borrowing because we're putting a decent amount of cash into capital. So then we said, okay, let's solve for a borrowing, which happens to be almost 18 million rather than 13. That would allow us to demonstrate to y'all that we we meet both our cash position, policy and the coverage. And the reason the borrowing is more is because we're saving more cash to meet the 50% cash. So we're borrowing a little more, but both of these are funding the exact same universe of projects. And you'll we'll talk a little bit about, you know, you'll be able to go to a a bank for this or that VRA program because they do utilities, possibly a bond issue in your own name. But I I think between direct bank loan and VRA, you're you've got your bases covered pretty thoroughly. I don't think if there's anything else really critical on this slide. I don't think so. Okay. So go to the first fold out page 12. And you go down to 20 25, right? This is the adopted budget. Y'all did a 4% rate increase in 25 there on line eight. In 26, we're we're building into our model another 4% rate increase, okay? Now, you you also, if you go and look up in 26, you go to to line four, natural system growth, 8.97%. That's that is revenue that we're expecting the system to generate from development and connection activity. So there's 8.9% revenue growth anticipated from natural new customers. And then we're supplementing that with a 4% rate increase to make this work in 26. And then what you can see, 27 and beyond in that gold bar, is what we would expect on top of the natural growth. And remember, the natural growth is spend a lot of time like looking at all the pockets of development in the county and how many people are going to connect in what year. That natural growth is line four. And you see it's it's 8%, 7%. It starts to tail off to virtually zero, right? So we're we're not assuming that new customers are going to keep coming on to this system at 7 to 8% a year, every year. That's why we've got this gold bar that says you're going to need to consider raising rates to generate new revenue to support this scenario. And remember, this scenario is just the 13 million and just meeting our debt service coverage. So there's 4% assumed in 26, nothing assumed to be needed in 27, 0.7 in 28, 10% in 29, 7, 9, 5, and so on. Okay? And and the check is on line 56. Every year we're green, we hit that 1.15 times coverage. The challenge with this case is on line 76. Our cash gets well below our policy of 50%, right? We're getting down to in some couple of years, single digits. That's with the 13 million dollar borrowing, right? With with growth and potential rate increases, we can meet our coverage, but our cash falls short. And remember, we have not assumed any capital investment beyond 27. Next slide, very simple concept. We've just said borrow a little more, save cash. We're funding the same projects. Our debt service coverage on line 56 checks the minimum every year and our cash on line 76 never falls below 50%. So from a projection period, we can say we anticipate being able to meet our our coverage and our cash. But you go back up to line six. We have the same natural growth here, right? Same number of people connecting based on development projections. But we need in that gold bar, you know, it's a slightly different schedule of rate increases because we're borrowing a little more and saving cash to meet our cash policy. Let me stop there. Maybe questions?
Was the cash policy less than the 13 million dollars?
Yeah, that's why it's all red down there.
The the capital assumption on both of these scenarios is that we're spending everything that's been recommended in the FY '26 capital outlay as well as all the carryforwards in the from FY '25 into FY, or from FY '24 into FY '25 in the next two years. So that's essentially 33 million dollars of capital outlay over the next two years. So I just want to make sure we're all aware of that part, too.
Yeah, and that means we're either in our scenarios, we're borrowing either 13 or 17 million. So there's a pretty significant amount of cash being contributed to capital here, which is good. It's, you know, that's been accumulated and it's nice to have a balance. But so you're you're not at you know, I don't. I think that that one of the takeaways is, yes, there's debt, but it's not an over-reliance on debt. You're just, you know, you're debt funding everything. It's a balance.
Mr. Lawrence, I think what you're implying there is that it's very unlikely for that to happen.
Well, I would, Mr. Lang's better for the the scheduling of these projects and when the need is. But it would be a lot of work to get done in the next 18 months. So I I wouldn't foresee that being exactly. But again, conservatively, if it's on the in the budget, we we do like to have an idea of when the quickest it could all be done is. I think this is that picture.
Yeah. And I think somewhat along those lines, for a revenue bond, which is this would be, right? It's not necessarily tied to this building or that building. You're not putting a mortgage on all of these things that you're building. You're pledging the revenues of the water and sewer system. So with a bank, as an example, which we've done that before, you can do that anytime you want. You have complete control over when you would go to borrow money from a bank. And we've assumed a 20-year term with a 5% interest rate. And many banks participate in loans like that. But you control the timing. The other one would be VRA and you have three windows a year. So there would be an opportunity to spread this out more in line maybe with how spend is is happening. I think that's a continuation of that conversation. Does it have to be done all at once if there's comfort in spreading it out over time?
I'll jump in there if I may. Our growth in user free fee
Uh, our growth in user free fee revenue is great. We see it year over year. We are starting to decline in other revenue streams which help offset these increases. Nutrient credits are down, uh, connection fees are projected to be down, availability fees, we've eliminated the avalorum tax. So all of those things add up to, um, at least a couple million dollars in revenue that, um, the utilities lose.
Mr. Chair, a question. Um, Rod, or Mr. Hathaway, there are new fees in this proposed fee schedule, right? That, are those taken into consideration in here?
Uh, the new fees are very minor offsets in our cost of inspection, plan review, development fees basically, but they wouldn't even add up to 1%.
Okay.
Yeah, and a, a, a lot of those fees are really just pass-throughs. They're fees that we have to pay to outside consultants that we're collecting from the applicant.
Yeah. We're just trying to help some of our cost review plans and set projects.
And I'll just let you know what's behind the last couple of slides. Just gets into different funding options and timing, but I basically covered that. With banks, which you've done, you all call the shots, any, any month of the year that you might want to do it with VRA, which is a very good option, you've just got to sync up with their, um, their program. So for example, they do have a summer pool, the application is due next week and the money is available, uh, this week. Thank you. The money is available the first week of August. Then they've got another one, the application's going to be due around August 1st. Money will come in late October, early November. Then you're into the February application for April, May of '26. So that's kind of the sequencing.
Mike? Anything else? Question?
I know you've got some. Yeah.
Mr. Steers?
Yes, Ted, it, what, what's an alternative to raising the, the 4% a year in the water rates? I mean, people, I mean, like this one guy told me that his water bill is more than his car payment a month.
Right.
So where else can we find the funding, even if it's not through proffers from builders or, I mean, if that is legal, uh, that we, some other funding instead of putting this on the backs of the taxpayers?
Well, I guess the, it's, I'm not sure it doesn't make its way to the taxpayer ultimately, but connection and availability fees, but those are paid by the, I think by the developer, but that would make you think it's in the lot price, right? I mean, that would make sense.
Correct, correct. Ultimately pass-through in the home cost, right? But, um, we need, we need some new connections to look forward to and right now they're water only. So water connection is about $7,500, a water and sewer connection is about $19,400, I believe. So it's a significant difference.
Right. So is there an alternative source for that?
Uh, raise the fees, raise connection fees and approve more connections.
Still going to come down to the home or what?
Correct, correct. Uh, alternative source, raise reclaimed water fees, um, nutrient credits, unfortunately, well, fortunately, but unfortunately for us, people aren't polluting New York River like they used to. We don't have nutrient credits to sell.
And, well, one thing to, to, to remember is that, yes, we're seeing a lot of growth. Significant portion of that growth is in the Farms New Kent. They've already prepaid all their connection fees, so we're not getting any connection fees, uh, from that development.
Exactly.
So, um, Mike, when, um, we have a number of new developments that are coming out of the ground now that been approved a long time ago or weren't approved, but just happened to be there. Um, are, have their connection fees been paid yet?
Only the Farms New Kent.
Okay, so, oh, everybody else, so, um, but they have a, they have a price that they know what their connection fee's going to be?
They do.
Uh, and that's locked in?
Uh, until we change it in the annual budget.
Because, um, what, what I'm kind of getting at is that, um, the, the people that would be developing, uh, having connection fees from now on don't live here right now.
Correct.
Okay, and so if there's connection fees that are going to go up, I would expect that we could put them up for future growth.
It would be part of the cost of moving to New Kent.
Correct. And, uh, on, on a $500,000 house, maybe even more than that, a $2,500 increase in the connection fee, I don't think would be a reason not to go to, to live in New Kent. This, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, but, um, I, um, I, I'm, I'm kind of the, one of the wrong guys to look at this. One of the reasons for a 4% increase last year is because we don't pay the avalorum tax anymore, which is my development and also some five lakes.
It's your fault.
Yeah, uh, but, but we're, remember, we're, we're, we're buying water and we're paying 4% more and we're going to pay 4% more next year too. But, um, for that future growth, uh, not what is on the books now, but I, I think it'd be a good idea if we looked at that, at those and, and increased those and, and have a, a price to come to New Kent.
Our traditional line thought was that those were very high and shouldn't be raised again, but I think we need to rethink that for FY '27. That's right.
There was a time where those were raised almost annually, but it's been a decade ago, I think.
Well, you're talking about the water rates?
The connection and availability.
Oh, okay.
Without raising those rates.
We were able to sustain for a while, but like I said, with other revenue streaming, our nutrient credits peaked at $455,000 a few years ago. That's equivalent to, man, six or seven percent rate increase right there or rate reduction if you like to look at it that way, but we just can't count on that revenue anymore. So, um, it was very well lasted. They do a great job at the treatment plant of, um, staying in compliance and having credits to sell, but if nobody's buying, they're worthless.
Well, I, I would appreciate if you guys would at least look into that because that's, um, you know.
Regardless of connection fee?
Uh, the water, water rates, you know? I know when I first got on the board, they was going up, they were going up 4%, 4%, 4%.
Eight percent.
Eight percent, and then all of a sudden it dropped to two and then it dropped to zero, zero, zero. We need to get back to the zero, zero, zero.
Yeah, we've, um, we've reached the point where we've, um, maximized the capacity of some of our water systems. Um, and then additionally, all the new and wonderful things that were built for us 15, 20 years ago, now they're 15, 20 years old, so they require a lot of maintenance, um, repair. Just found out that the Colony's generator has gone kaput and will need to be replaced. So, um, those are things we have looked ahead and predicted in our CIPs and those sorts of things, but, um, those costs keep coming in on an unexpected basis. We have trimmed about a quarter million dollars out of our operating budget, budgets. We have five. Um, we plan for the most likely worst-case scenario so that we don't have to come to you and ask for a hundred thousand dollars for a well connected one. But, um, so that contingency is built in, we've trimmed a lot of that out. Uh, we consistently come in under budget and in the black on our operating revenue, but, you know, as, as you've said, these other lines are coming down, so we've got to figure out where we're going to get the revenue from. So we'll definitely dig back in and look at our fast fee to minimize those revenue businesses.
I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the update. It was very, very informative, gives us something to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it, it's still kind of hard to get excited about borrowing 130 million dollars. I mean, it's just, and all you're doing there is basically two projects. And that's the school and satisfying the courts and stuff. We, that gives us no space. Uh, admin building had been discussed. Uh, I know it's been brought up, dropped, brought up and dropped, but, um, you know, we, this, we still have no space.
Well, what's, what's in that $65 million number for the new courthouse, there's also funds to renovate the existing courthouse so that can be utilized as administration offices as, as well. So, um, I kind of see the courthouse building taking care of two issues. Number one, the back office space in the courthouse, there is none. Um, they are completely out of space in the courthouse, um, but it would allow us to expand administration offices into that existing building as, as well.
Yep. All right. Our, our last item, uh, purchase of Tax Map Parcels 24-7-4-6. Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board. Um, as you are aware, we've been in discussions with the property owners of Tax Map Parcel This parcel is a little over five acres, 5.026 acres located at the corner of New Kent Highway and, and Cumberland Road. Um, the purchase price is $150,000. Um, we have a signed purchase agreement. The closing is scheduled for May 6th. Um, and in order for us to close on the property and pay the property owners, uh, you have a motion before you appropriating the funding. Now, at this point, unfortunately, I thought I would have it by now, I just have not received that, um, from our closing attorney yet. Um, I don't have the exact closing cost, so the motion right now is to appropriate up to $160,000. That's for the $150,000 purchase price and to cover any closing costs, which should be nowhere near, um, 160,000, but I just wanted to build some room just because I don't know. It actually should be under 5,000 for, for closing. Um, yeah, but just in case something comes up at the last minute that I'm not aware of, um, I did bake in a, a, a little more. So that is an up to amount, but we will definitely only spend, uh, the purchase price plus the closing cost, which I don't have the closing cost right now.
Did that property have some, uh, deed restrictions on it?
There, there is a 150-foot buffer on one side of the property, I'm sorry, a 100-foot buffer on one side of the property, which we don't anticipate being an issue with any future development of, of the property.
It's my understanding too, that you could do some type of, county could do some type of building, but I don't think, it does have some restrictions on it that, uh, you know, you can't do, no, but it's my understanding, according to, uh, a realtor that sold some of those lots over there, that if it wasn't for the county behind it, they couldn't put any, like, other businesses or anything like that unless it was county.
But, but I, I believe, I'm not, I did not read that in the title report and I can take another look at that. Um, I know in the current zoning right now, nothing else would be permitted other than a, a county building could be built, uh, with the current zoning, um, and it would allow for a house too.
Right.
Um, if we did anything else, we would have to rezone.
All right. Any discussion on that?
I've, I've helped me figure out, what, what was the root purpose for us behind the property?
Sure, thank you, and I, I meant to kind of leave with that. Um, there is no intended use right now, um, but we know that there will be a need for future public facilities. It may be 20 years from now, it may be 30 years from now, uh, but we're out of land in this administrative complex and we've always considered this to be the center of the county, the center of, of government operations. So if there was a need for another building, um, this site could definitely be used for, for that.
Thank you.
I think the, the family also came, came to the county and I think they, they really wanted, it was a good price, they wanted the county to have it, kind of memory of, of their parents. Any other discussion? I'd all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the purchase of Tax Map Parcel 24-7-4-6, consisting of approximately 5.026 acres located at the intersection of New Kent Highway and Cumberland Road. I further move to appropriate up to $160,000 from the Colonial Downs Reserve for future projects capital line to fund the purchase price and closing cost.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson, any other discussion? Stanger, poll members please.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Uh, is there any other business? Mr. Moyer, you've got a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for the discussion of disposition of a real property where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county regarding the lease of county property to Rappahannock Community College and bridging communities.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Stanger, we poll the members please.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
So we're going closed session and we will not take any action when we come out. Uh, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, and the next work session will be held at 9:00 AM on Tuesday, May 27th, both in the boardroom. Thank you.
[inaudible]